The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, April 8th, 2021.
We have an invitation from Perry Ray.
In the name of the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, thank you for this wonderful spring day of bringing us together. Please guide us as you can in our deliberations. Help us to remember those we serve. And, Lord, please send us the spring moisture and rains that we need so desperately. And we ask this in your name, Jesus Christ, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. [inaudible]
Mayor Robertson?
Present.
Councilman Flankis is absent. Councilman Person is absent. What part of the [inaudible] on my zoom? Councilman Spear?
Here.
Councilman Alworth?
Present.
Councilwoman Beecher?
Here.
City Clerk Lee?
Here.
City Treasurer, HR Director Trask?
Here.
City Attorney Manley?
Sure.
City Fire Chief Stork?
Here.
Public Works Supervisor Craig Craft?
Here.
City Building Official Lee Walker?
Here.
City Engineer Albert?
Here.
And that's all.
Okay. With that, we move on to item two, public comment. Please state your name for the record. You'll have a three minutes.
Well, my name is Randy Bowden, golf professional and off course. We have an item on the agenda that I just wanted to say on the county side of things, it is the city's facility, and the golf course is, and we simply need to. I believe they've done a great job of maintaining the facility as best we can, purchasing new carts, new sheds, take care of all the maintenance and those needs. And, quite frankly, I think that, you know, we were self-sufficient, completely self-sufficient with our own wells and whatnot. And we survived on water. That enterprise helped. So we didn't, we didn't hit the taxpayers very good. Since I've been here in '04 and '06, we became an enterprise. So I'm hoping that you'll see it moving our way to help maintain your facility.
For the record, I'm Richard House, citizen of Ely and also a very active member of the White Pine Golf Course. I'm retired. I use that golf course every single day pretty much in the summertime. I have good friends over ninety years old, so I share my friends. The golf course is an asset. It's, it's a part of our community, just like the pools and everything else that makes, softball fields, everything that makes quality of life for living within White Pine County. The water issue, we maintain, the county does, the buildings, everything that go along with it, the employees. We don't squat high, you know, we pay our water bill as usual. But by overcharging and possibly destroying the quality of life that we have here in White Pine County and our ability to utilize that golf course, I know several people that probably won't live here anymore if there's not a golf course because that's what they do. Many people that live here to hunt, fish, and do whatever they do, that's their, that's their prerogative, that's what they do. But many, several, several people over the last many decades have utilized that golf course. It's, it's not out there to make money for anybody, for any entity. It's strictly out there for the enjoyment, if that's what a person wants to do, and for the exercise that a person gets. I play almost every day of the week with a ninety-two-year-old man. Ninety-two years old. And last year later, it was done of him, he passed away. Those guys played golf for over fifty years on that golf course. It keeps them active, it keeps their mind, keeps them healthy, keeps me healthy. It's something that as you recognize the importance of the golf course and utilize water fees or raising them in order to supplement or to make income, it's not what it's all about. Softball fields aren't for making money. The swimming pool isn't out there to make money, it's just to have something, someplace to go, almost similar to what a library. Things we offer in the city and the county are for the benefit of all the citizens of the county. And that, in doing that, sometimes we have to pay a little more if we don't make any money on the deal. And I know that White Pine County Golf Course has been well-maintained and well-run for many, many days. And the sea fees go out of sight, possibly reducing the size of course or even eliminating the golf course. I played out there last week or week and a half, we had no water running. They're starting to get cracks in the greens. Needs water. It needs, it's thirsty. We have to have water on that golf course, and I don't care what the costs are or how much they are. The county can't afford that much cost, but the city and the county working together that maintain the golf course and the facility for all those residents of White Pine County for decades and decades. And I hope it resumes and stays that way for many, many more. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Most of you know I'm Michael Neese, thirty-year resident of this county and a strong user and show of the operation. Last two years out of thirty years, that's the only time I get a lump of [inaudible]. I've watched you go through quite a bit of changes. All of the financial changes and everything else, especially the mandates had to go through. The pumps used to cost us about fifteen thousand dollars. That was cool. But then they decided that they wanted to drill that new well, you did, and put it down in there. And they said, "Well, with this change, you're not going to have to pay a water bill." Then they turn around, you turn around, and you say, "The council proposing a rate of approximately forty-eight thousand dollars is thirteen-three thousand dollars more than what we were paying five, six, seven years ago." These are hard times for everybody, but I don't see how we can possibly expect the golf course to put out that kind of money. It's on the same water line, so all you're doing is pumping it, and it's just way out of control. Thank you.
Mayor, member of the council, put record, my name's Kevin Hawison, and a member of the golf advisory board, and have been for a number of years, and in a volunteer time at the, at White Pine County Golf Course since the time that I started playing back when I was fourteen years old. That entity literally saved our life. My mom would attest to that if she was here today. I was a little bit juvenile delinquent, and I was taken there at seven-thirty in the morning and picked up at six o'clock in the morning. Not that that matters, but I think it has an impact on the youth here in this community. And what we've seen over the years, the golf course is called out as an elitist opportunity or, or project, a facility. It's not. It's open to everyone. A single mother with three kids that can have a young man grow up out there and learn to be a quality piece of this community. And I'm thankful for, for that. My mom gave me that opportunity. But let's not take away from the youth. And it is in jeopardy. It is truly in jeopardy. It's the only entity within the county or the city organization that has to support We do get assistance. And I'll tell you right now, I'll be the first one to admit, back in two thousand eleven or twelve, when this, this arrangement was made, it was huge to that organization and that, that facility. Absolutely huge. What a benefit, what a quality. We understand we have to pay our way, but don't, don't kiss them because they will. And I think the statements that have been made about the facility going away, let's keep in mind whose facility that is. It becomes a liability for this entity right here if we go away. It's not a threat, but it's something you have to consider. You don't want your expenses to rise. We're offering an equivalent income, revenue, back to the municipality. Consider it. If we become successful, you're successful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on your Jedi Day, you would consider water needs for the golf course. There should be no discussion until they pay their bill and pull it the same rate to the other entities, other businesses. They are not built properly due to duct tape being found at the water heater. The heater was intentionally sabotaged, needing to pay the average use when the heater was functioning properly. Federal law mandates, federal law mandates in states, you cannot discriminate to any federally funded or assisted utility. The county golf course is looking for a sweetheart deal. Golf, I'd remind you, is a luxury, not a necessity. I want to ask, have they paid for the hundred-and-one million gallons that were reported by Councilman Alworth at a previous meeting? Was the service cut off? I want to remind you, your auditors have always stated you show the true cost of doing business. I'm not against the golf course, but it's just like anything else, you have to show the true cost of doing business. You're not doing that. Mr. Mayor, I requested a copy of the quarter group report that Councilman Alworth had at the last meeting to talk about the progress. It was not provided. I'm requesting that again. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, item eight, we wanted you to consider the possible appointment of Bunny Hill to the animal control advisory board. I want to remind you, she's not a city resident. You need to re-advertise for someone who lives within the city. Mr. Mayor, the city needs to solicit a newspaper that's fair and balanced, and if you took away money for classified ads last April seventh, two thousand twenty, she's yet to run the ad. That's fraud. That business needs to have its license taken away. She sits on a board now, and there's a problem running it properly. I've got a memo here or a letter that I got from the city back in August sixteen, two thousand six. I had a friend put some boats on a lot that I own to eat the wigs proper, probably. And I was cited by Mr. Alworth, who was the clerk treasurer at the time, about chapter three, animal control, article A, livestock entitled section five, dash three, so on and so forth. And yet to this date, we have courses in one location, courses in another location, been there for years. The selective enforcement, I looked at the reports from the animal control, not one citation for livestock within the community that in two thousand six it came after me. The selective enforcement, Mr. Mayor, has got to stop. You need to put people under, know what they're doing, and the animal control officer-
Thank you, George.
-need to conform to what the regulations don't require of discrimination. I want some action, Mr. Mayor.
Any other public comment? Here, in seeing none, we'll post public comment and move on to item three, our discussion for possible action, approval of agenda, including removal of agenda highlights. We'll entertain a motion on this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Point of discussion?
Yeah.
Is it possible to move under new business, item number one, to the front of the meeting for convenience of the interview?
It is.
Sorry, yes.
That's okay. We have a motion from Councilman Spear and a second from Councilwoman Beecher. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you propose to remove that in front of the reports or after the reports?
The, not the reports.
So we'll go to the city reports, we'll start with item two.
Only one thing to really update on. I know some of you are aware, down there you see the load of contaminated fuel. Unfortunately, we received the effects of that in four different pieces of apparatus. Right now, we got one that's currently out of service, waiting on parts. Hopefully, we'll have it up tomorrow, but it's looking more like it's going to be Saturday. District Chief North is going to muster up another ambulance that he's going to bring and have, so we'll have available should something come up. And this is going to be an ongoing process of getting that contaminated fuel out of the other pieces of equipment. As soon as we were made aware of it, I know if I had the county and they, now they pumped, pumped a bunch of it out and sent some for samples, so we're yet to hear back of exactly what was in the fuel, but so on. And if there's no other question, I'm going to report this pretty much all about.
Thank you. Police chief?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman. I should have my quarterly report. Unfortunately, the first one that got sent out was wrong, the date ranges, the four ambulance and other, yeah, reports were not correct, so we sent out the amended as quickly as we noticed that, so I should say amended in the date by the time it was amended. So if there's any questions, the reports, just like Councilman Alworth requested, are basically for all city calls, residents and our residents.
Is everything going okay between coordination, between you and D in your office as far as traffic?
Yeah, we've been actually working there quite heavily. I hope they notice our presence there. We wrote quite a few citations for that construction zone. It seems that the, the problem areas are really those that are coming off of Great Basin Boulevard, heading in the northward direction. Going down that hill and we'll watch that, see him with his own chain right there, so we've been hitting really heavy for him. We're doing a good job.
We appreciate that, Bill. Thank you. Do you need us to report to Judge? He's on the call, I didn't make air. City attorney?
Nothing to report.
City clerk?
We received notice on Monday that the city has been awarded the CBG grant for the third phase of Murray Street, so we're really excited about that. The PAC, Councilman Alworth, signed us a few weeks ago that municipalities with more than eleven employees have to have a safety committee and needs to have quarterly meetings, so we're supervisor, Craig Craft, we put that up, and we're just getting our safety plan in place under municipal PAC, so.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Mr. Mayor, you need to turn up the volume.
Uh, city treasurer?
Can we combine the public works in this one?
Combine public works?
Yeah.
Sure. Go on up there, man. She wants, she wants you there for her.
So basically, we've had some unexpected costs on the armory, my console, but to me I haven't leaked it, you can't give me the details. But right now, where I've found the money to pay for it is a redevelopment fund, and I will have to augment to finish it off because then I do have the funds available to augment. So if you want details on what it is, ask him.
Do you have anything else to report on the treasurers?
Oh, no, I'll be getting the budget off. I did include the RSVP from last meeting into it, and we'll find you at, at the final meeting.
Mr. Mayor, just take a break and we get the speakers working in the flight.
Something, the volume there?
No, it's in the computer.
Or is it?
Just for the record, I've texted people on Zoom, they can hear well.
It's not going to have the speakers in the room is the problem.
Yeah. So people are, we're just going to have to speak out, because at this point, we've got everybody on the meeting, we have to shut everything down, get everybody back in.
Speak louder, man.
Okay. We got questions, the, the [inaudible].
They're still finding the, I see them moving stuff right now.
They are, they make these in there and then the ads in there. The heating system's not working properly, the thermostat, we have company to come. It's all computerized, they're in a computer, each salt had to run it, they'd be stationed over here in the office to run the thermostat. But right now, every two hours I have to get up and then I turn it off, shuts off in two hours. The electrical, heating didn't work properly, some of it did work, some of it didn't work.
When are they going to have that all rectified?
I don't have a date. It's called, the company's called Vision, where they, they take care of the school district and prisons.
They are working on it, so.
How much money to date? As of right now, six or two thousand dollars. The sprinkler system, one pipe's broke, the water system, one pipe's broke, the boiler, machine oil problems, it's quite extensive.
Ouch.
Yes. We got one more building.
And if I understand correctly, city treasurer, the money for the repairs is coming from redevelopment because it's in the redevelopment district.
Correct.
Thank you.
And it's to be paid back as the?
No.
I mean, it goes back, how does that work when the checks come in for the rent?
That goes into your general fund as revenue. It won't go back into redevelopment, because redevelopment is based off of property taxes on the redevelopment. This is basically us upgrading the building to make it rentable.
Okay. Anything else to report, Matt?
That's it.
Any questions? Thank you. Uh, city water operator, we have to report the city engineer.
Get a grip. Come higher.
I'm trying. The, uh, we've been pretty tight up busy with some of this stuff with the quarter group, trying to get some qualifications together for some of the earmark stuff that the city's trying to accomplish. We're making some last-minute modifications and stuff, and so we should have those exhibit and everything else together, associate with that tomorrow. And then we actually have a, tomorrow at ten o'clock, we have a conference call with a lot of [inaudible] as well, so. I doubt it's been keeping us busy. We also got the other stuff that keeps us pretty busy is all the street project, we're all been slowed down by, we're all very much aware of it, and so knock on wood, that project actually, as far as we're concerned, is going very well for us. And the other project that we're really with is our street project up here, and they're basically getting to the second annual car check. They're having a little bit of troubles at times, the side walls are collapsing, kind of, the side walls, it's just only a couple of [inaudible]. But they're, they're getting more efficient to better all of those, all of those [inaudible]. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
As of right now, I'm still pres, uh, proceeding with all my training with the ICC. I had a minor hiccup from the last time, I said I was planning on taking it within a week, but if you'll take the packet, I have a lot of inspections that I shadow ground as well as the residential stuff that I'm doing. So I'm planning on taking the residential inspector certification test next week, so. But other than that, we've issued twenty-two building permits, and I've done a couple stock reporters, things that come to my office and go investigating, look, and had to put a stop to some things. Most people have, since then, have brought, brought in building plans and paid their fees and applied for their building permits and so on and so forth. Other than that, any questions?
Yeah, Lee, is, when you talk about the building permits, are we seeing an influx of new homes, new, new building, new construction on homes? It's a big concern.
Um, yeah. I want to say, ooh, at least four or five are being built right now.
Anything projected for the future? I know the price of lumber and building material is skyrocketing, do you think that might be hampering some hopeful building?
Um, yeah, I would assume so because two-by-fours used to cost two, three dollars a piece, now they're upwards to nine to ten dollars a piece. As well, as well as plywood, used to be eighteen dollars a sheet for half inch, say, now it's almost close to forty dollars. So that could be hindering why you're not allowing [inaudible] right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator, we council on the [inaudible] for item?
Uh, item five is the N, sorry, the NNY Foundation report. Mark is not here tonight, but you will have the report in your packet. So if there are any questions, then I will turn it back to the mayor.
Okay, we'll do the city council reports, and we'll start with Councilman Spear.
I'm [inaudible].
Councilman Alworth?
No, just your mayor.
Councilman Beecher? Um, I did get a call last night from Councilman Spear about a water main break. I did talk to Ed Bartlett right after that, PMD, they were now taking care of that, and had it all wrapped up by eight o'clock, just an old ductrail and knife that had broke that they'd uncovered, and just the joys of remodeling, so there we are.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Person is [inaudible].
Oh, I forgot about that. Councilman Bell? If we're not being heard over this, I doubt he's going to be able to be heard over the thing.
No, our sound is coming through the crystal clear, so the Zoom presents it, it's in the room.
Uh, Councilman Carson, do you have anything to report? That's what I'm saying, I think we're going to have trouble hearing him. If these speakers aren't putting anything out here.
I'm serious. Hi.
Anything to report?
No report, just dying, thank you.
Thank you.
What'd he say?
Said no report.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, we will move on to item B one, new business, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, mayoral appointment of one animal control advisory board member with the consent of the Ely City Council through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, with the following applicants, Buggy Gill. I reviewed her letter, and she does qualify under our code as one of the two members of the Allen County, and I would recommend her for appointment to the council.
I would move to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll take a check.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you vote?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Your appointment, thank you for your application, we're very excited.
I'm excited to attend on first meeting. Thank you.
And with that, we will move back to item seven, items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Council as recommended by the municipal utility board. Item one, Councilman Carson, White Pine County Commissioner Shane Byde, discussion for possible action, discussion regarding possible solutions to the golf course water needs with possible approval of the course of action. Commissioner, my name.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. You know, this is, this has been an ongoing kind of negotiation back and forth to come up with a workable solution for watering the golf course that's something that, that helps cover your budget, but also doesn't, doesn't break ours, and, and we're very grateful for the time that's been spent to try and come up with a workable solution. You know, I'm no stranger to the chairs you're sitting in, I spend a long, a lot of time there, and I understand the, the problems that, that you go through to, to make this work. But I think that we've come up with what we're hoping is a short-term workable solution in, for the long term, we want to work on, on getting our well back into production and, and getting that underway to where we can stand independent, and we're hoping we can do that in, in the next couple of years. But in the interim, I would just respectfully ask, I think we've got a good, we worked out a good agreement to the utility board, and I would ask that you would approve that.
And we certainly appreciate all the work that all, that you and everybody who else has been working on this, including [inaudible] from golf advisory board. And we certainly appreciate all the work that all, that you and everybody who else has been working on this, including me from the golf advisory board. I think you guys have come up with some really creative solutions. And just to speak a little bit to some of the comments earlier, this is, this is not a budgeting issue for the city. The golf course has been using ten to twenty percent of our money.